This meeting of the Cedarburg Fourth Education. Excuse me, it's Wednesday, May 17, 2017. This meeting has been noticed in the district as well as news graphics in Milwaukee Journal Sentinel. Please join me in this.
My pleasure, this is the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Moving right along to proclamations, great.
The state of Wisconsin declare the following proclamations. School attrition employee week, May 1st through the 5th, 2017. Teacher appreciation week, May 8th through the 12th, 2017. School nurse day, May 10th, 2017. All proclamations are posted on the district website. I think we should go back to read the whole thing again since.
Right.
Maybe give Mr. Leach something else to do.
Alright, moving right along to Todd, Hartfield Elementary.
Excellent, Jane Holmes here, I'm going to introduce the school, Jane, want to come to the podium? You want to take this time to recognize Hartfield Elementary School, which earned the 2016 Wisconsin Talent School Recognition Award. Hartfield was presented this award on their first at the state Capitol in attendance itself, Allen Growth, Jane, Michelle Struff. This is the second time that Hartfield has earned this award in three years. And this is the plaque that they received at the Capitol. They were an elite company, not many elementary schools would see this, it was a well-attended event. And congratulations Jane, congratulations to your team at Hartfield. Would you like to say a few words Jane?
Sure, I think that our receiving this award is really a collective effort of not only all of our parents, but the support of our parents along with our staff and all of the board members just for supporting education. We've noticed that the honor we received for that closing the gaps score, they look at the students who are your typical students in Cedarburg and then those who may have socioeconomic status or something else that gives them an additional challenge, are at-risk population. And they compare the performance level between those groups of kids. And when we can pull together and use all our efforts to close that achievement gap, we see great achievement, so we're very proud of it and proud of all the hard work that our teachers do.
Yeah, congratulations.
So Todd has a plaque.
Yes, you like.
If you were going to show it, you're going to pass it around.
I was going to pass it around, okay.
I did bring the plaque that we received in medicine along with the one that we received two years ago, so I'm going to pass it around. I'll make sure that I take that back with me. Thank you.
Thank you.
Alright, moving along, Mr. Kennedy.
Congratulations from the following music students for their achievement as exemplary award of the year's 2017 WSMA State Solo and Ensemble Festival. Trombone solo, Colton Herbert. Jazz woodwind improvisation solo, Jasper Cashal. Tivity solo, Alan Gronewitz. Violin solo, Claire Lou Music. Theater female solo, Marguerite Manning and Shelby Zane. The competition was held at Cardinal Street University on May 6th, 2017. This is the highest honor a music student can receive at this event, so congratulations all of them.
Additionally, I think it's the highest number of kids Cedarburg High School has ever had at the state.
Excellent, alright, moving right along, Mr. Benacki, we have a special guest.
Yes, we have a special guest in our audience, Vana Patel. Vana, if you could please come down to the podium. Vana has been our district library representative on the city library board for over a year. She's a huge library advocate, not only here in the district but across the state. She's, she worked in Cedarburg School District from 1970, 2005.
Yes, yes.
Vana, third year she's in, she held a position at Thorson and at the high school. She has provided librarian services for over 31 years and we're very appreciative of her contributions and her dedication and commitment to the school district. And we would like to present her with this certificate, Cedarburg School District Certificate of Appreciation awarded to Vana Patel for your outstanding service to Cedarburg School District. Thank you for your commitment and service in providing remarkable leadership and guidance through media services and support. We are grateful to you for your dedication and advocacy to library services awarded this 17th day of May 2017. Signed myself and President Chris Tremor. Thank you very much, Vana, for your service.
Thank you. If you have a little time, I'd like to share just a few highlights of that, so okay?
You have an hour.
Okay, okay. I served as a representative to the school, to the library board. This is a function of state law that says the superintendent of a school district should be a board member on the Cedarburg Public Library Board. And so I served as a representative on the public library board for superintendents, Mr. Frank Kennedy, who hired me in the district, Dr. Gary Compton, Dr. Daryl Herrick, Dr. John Labberson, and recently Todd Benacki. Just a few highlights I'd like to share with you. In 1970, I was hired and I worked over at Thorson Elementary School. When I came to the building, I thought, well, everything will be ready for me and I'll be ready to go. Well, the previous librarian, the school had just opened, the previous librarian, I had a pregnancy and she decided to leave. And so I thought that, well, everything would be ready. When I arrived, everything was in boxes. So that was my challenge as a new library media specialist, to set up a complete elementary IMC and then also the program for the children too. In the 1980s, I became the IMC coordinator working with the IMC directors. At that time, we had five professional IMC directors and aides in each building. And so I met with them monthly to coordinate activities. In 1990, I received the Cole Award from Senator Cole and the school district received $1,000. And so we were anxious to get more computers and so we bought a computer with the $1,000. And I received $1,000. I was the first media specialist in the state to receive the award. Professional development supported me through conferences when I spoke at local, state, or national conferences in library, media, or technology. I was always supported by the district and superintendents and I am very, very grateful for that. Probably I wouldn't be here if I didn't have all that support to get out to the state and at national conferences. In 1981, I was president of the Wisconsin School Library Media Association. And that changed to, as the trends changed, Wisconsin Educational Media Association and now Wisconsin Educational Media Technology Association. And we have school library media people attending this conference as well as technology people attended. I was also in the planning committee for the CHS Library Renovation and Expansion, which was in 1997. And during teachers convention, I was here, a representative from Amory Furniture came and I selected furniture and shelving for the new IMC. But it was, I was very grateful to be part of that committee. Public library, okay? I have been the trustee for 31 years, I thought I was 24, but I won't argue with the city clerk. I requested the item "School Report" be placed on the permanent agenda, so there's always a report by the school representative on the report. I always tried to deliver copies of curriculum to the public library so they knew what courses were taught and what curriculum you have at the high school here and in the district. I served as substitute secretary when the secretary was absent. I still remember when we had a long, tremendous meeting and that happened to be the night the secretary was not there, then I had the minutes. I participated on the planning committee for the new public library, which involved interviewing the architect, construction manager, a library consultant, and many, many things over 10 years before we got our new public library. In recent years, I coordinated distribution of the public library newsletter to all staff through the school district and the parochial school, so I hope everyone is receiving that newsletter. I sent the district administrator, Todd, email reports. As a trustee, I attended Webster Middle School Book Discussions at 6:45 in the morning. And something that needed to be done also when you have a new library, you need to disperse the old furniture and shelving in the old library. And so we had about a week to do that, there was really a strict timeline. And so some of the board members were talking, how are we going to get rid of this furniture? And so what I did was to take photos of the shelving, take photos of the furniture, and put that in a PowerPoint and then put it on the library listserv in the state. So everyone, all the librarians in the state saw that we were trying to disperse this furniture. Of course, some of the furniture came to the district here, some went to Port Washington, Lou and Christie, I believe. And there was one public library at the very top of the state and they sent a truck to pick up shelving that we had because that small library could not afford any shelving. And so all the furniture and shelving was gone within a few days. During the promotion of the new library opening, I developed a PowerPoint of the new building that was shown at the Cedarburg Culture Center. And Linda Herschella, the director, gave an overview of the library. I always helped the friends of the library with spring and summer book sales. I coordinated monthly programs for the 100th anniversary of our library, which started in 1911. It was really interesting going through the old news graphics, I forget what they were called then, but there was information there way back. I wrote newspaper articles in support of building new library and an article on the history of the library and its beginnings in 1911. And of course too, I attended the Wisconsin Library Association along with the staff to bring that information to the board and so they are aware of what the new trends are in library from the convention. I worked with some marvelous people over the years, it's just wonderful, very professional people. I enjoyed being on the board along with the work that they had and the board right now is very good, so I've learned a lot. Also, I think when you're in the school district here, sometimes maybe teachers, we don't realize what's out in the community. And by being on the public library board, I became very aware of the council, the mayor, the planning commission, and other committees in the city too. So that kind of opened up my eyes and I learned a great deal about Cedarburg. And that also got me into volunteer. After I retired, I decided I wanted to give back to the community, so I am volunteering in several places in the community. Since I won't be on the board, I'll be giving more time to the Cedarburg Art Museum and also the League of Women Voters. So thank you gentlemen very much for this honor, I appreciate it. I love what I did and I think libraries are terrific and there's just so much that people can learn if they take the opportunity to go to the library. Okay? Todd, I brought your homework along, Trustee Essentials, A Handbook for Wisconsin Public Library.
You know, Rachel will accept that one.
So Vana, it's been, it's been nice working with you. I remember when I was on the city council and we were going through the library and trying to get that approved and all the work you did there. You said that you think libraries are terrific and, you know, so do I. I think Cedarburg's terrific and I think it's people like you and the countless hours of, you know, volunteering that makes Cedarburg what it is, you know, what a great community we are. And without you and people like you, it wouldn't be as fine as it is, so thank you for everything.
I'd like everybody to cross their fingers for me. I have been nominated for one of 50 people at the University of Wisconsin, Milwaukee. They're celebrating their 50th anniversary and they're picking 50 people out of 5,000 for an award and reception in full. I've made it past level one and today I just sent in my second four questions answered and my resume and I'll find out in July, so that would be very exciting. Thank you.
Good luck, thank you. Alright, moving right along, Mr. Benacki, the consent agenda.
Mr. Board members, before you have the consent agenda, I ask the board to approve the minutes from April 14th coordinating, also the financial records, which include summer accounts, the per-registered check detail and credit card transaction report, and the third part of consent agenda to the personnel board, we'll have to supply it for just that.
Thank you. This evening, we asked the board to approve resignation of Blair McCallum, a Thorson teacher at the end of this year. We also asked approval of a teacher contract to finish out the rest of this year for Trent Kadevich at the high school. We also have three contracts for teachers for next year that we ask for approval, Kendall Sass, teacher at Webster, Heather Sibley, school psychologist at Webster, and Kendall Winkus, speech and language pathologist at Webster. Among the support staff, we have one employee who left the district, Kimberly Jones, paraprofessional, and we have added a secretarial position for the human resources and technology departments, Mary Kulinski. We ask for approval of those contracts tonight.
Will you approve the consent agenda? Second.
Motion, second, all those in favor.
Okay, let's get it. Sorry, the, there's a table in minutes, and E, sorry, G, and G, the last instance is further discussion insured regarding the shooting. And then in E, it's, and let's see, sitting proof, about approval, the motion to approve scenario A, it says that the motion passed 4 to 3. I'm not sure if it actually passed or if that was on, that we needed a two-thirds.
Well, it passed, but when we go for the final approval of the budget, then it's two-thirds. So it has to that point.
Okay, so I'm sure.
I'll move to approve this matter. Second.
Motion, second, any further discussion? All those in favor? Aye. Against? Motion carries, looking at superintendent's notes.
Excellent, thank you. This evening, we're continuing on with our presentations. We had a school event throughout the school year and started with CNI in the fall, we had school services, all five schools presented in our rapid of the year. And this evening, we have Allen Growth and a team of teachers here to present on 4K, an update on the status of the four-year-old kindergarten. We're excited for 4K to get on, you see.
Awesome, and it's going to be a long presentation, so we're not going to be able to.
Good evening, everyone, my name is Allen Growth, the director of curriculum and instruction. Tonight, I'm going to give you an update on the implementation of four-year-old kindergarten. And the topics that are going to be covered in this presentation, we're going to give you a background regarding the foundations, key elements that helped to design the four-year-old program that we have. I have some teachers with me that are going to report out on the 4K advisory. We're going to talk about our results and then celebrate our year. So these are three wonderful teachers that I've had the good fortune of getting to know and work with, and two of them are here with us this evening, Amy Springetti, the far on your left, Lisa Matzick in the center, and Valerie Kosak, who could not be with us this evening. So I want to begin by just always drawing yourself back, drawing our attention back to the Plan Do Study Act. So it's a school improvement model that we use as we do any kind of program, improvement and change, and I'm drawing your attention to the study. So we are in our third year, if you think about it, of researching four-year-old kindergarten, then having a team last year investigate how we would implement it, and then eventually now it's implemented and we're studying how it went. So tonight's really all about the study portion of the Plan Do Study Act. Really links tightly to our beliefs as a school system, so community, so a lot of people involved in this, everything from background, even the year prior to me coming into the school system, last year with our implementation team, we have an advisory team that of course teaches. So a lot of people involved to really break forth what we believe is really something that has been life-changing for a lot of families and students. We use a cycle of inquiry to really reach our goals, I'll show you an update on my CPR card, and we definitely push forward, so there's some innovative changes in curriculum that we implemented this year that have actually had an impact now on kindergarten for next year. So these are two items that I'm pointing out that were not done last year when we closed up the year, so now I can mark them as green and they're finished, there wasn't a 4K advisory. And we did do a satisfaction survey out to all families, so you're going to hear some updates on both of those. So yay, we got it done. I want to start off by just acknowledging, I think this is an important quote, just to kind of center us around, much like Vana had shared, just a lot of gratitude. So feeling gratitude and not expressing it is like wrapping a present and not giving it. So really there, I feel very fortunate to work with great people and that I can rely on people for different tasks and different parts of the project to really complete it and bring it to fruition. So seriously, I felt that kind of juggle to myself, I thought it's sort of like the Academy Awards, people come up with those notes and then they want to thank all these people and you're almost worried like you're going to forget somebody. But I do want to just take a brief moment and highlight groups of people because seriously, I could never have delivered, I may help organize and facilitate the process, I could never have delivered on this project with all these people. So there's just so many, I just want to acknowledge, and it really does start with the board. So the board made the decision to do a school program and not have it out in the community that set the stage and the decision that we could actually move forward, so our appreciation to you. The superintendent's cabinet, Todd, Conrad, Ted, Kirsten, John, Ben, just setting the structure, all the policies and procedures and behind the scenes that take place to make this happen, including everything from hiring to painting walls orange on all 4K classrooms, to line new carpet and fresh new furniture, just all the different pieces that went into place. Teaching and learning, Ted, Kirsten, Rachel, Michelle Struff, Karen Agelhoff, all the details of all the sub-teamwork that took us, that occurred to really deliver really a full 4K program. Absolutely could not have done it without each of them. And each, each have like focus areas, and I won't go into all the details, but they know that they made a huge contribution. Technology and assessment, so Kirsten's entire team, seriously, from data mining on result that you're going to hear tonight, so Michelle Mock, to her team setting up the iPads in the classroom, just making sure all infrastructure pieces were in place, to the report card development, so many little behind the scenes pieces, so that team has been invaluable to us. Of course, our teachers, Amy, Valerie, and Lisa, who spent really well over, seriously, well over 40 hours of professional development, just getting to the point where we could deliver on the curriculum, not to mention layers of meetings and collaboration to really make sure that we're unified and going forward with our best step forward, so I really appreciate them. Angela, Jane, Katie, Teresa, Pat, Lindsay, so the school teams. So now these are, all these families are enrolling their children in the school system and they're meeting the secretary and getting tours of the school, and so the schools also shoulder a portion of this to make sure that they're welcoming, so I extend our appreciation to them. And then of course, the 4K advisory, you know, there we have families that committed to a year of meetings, just coming around 4K and its overall implementation, so just, that's a huge number of people. So again, just, I think it's good that we just kind of let that soak in and I want to make sure just to express my gratitude on behalf of the district and myself to all of them, so thank you.
You left out the academy, your agent.
Yeah, my mother, yeah, I started thinking of all these. I was going to say my wife, like, hours with the laptop, what are you doing tonight? Yeah, I'm working on something. And actually, do you appreciate her a lot?
Somebody watching on YouTube.
So access, quality coherence. So this was how we marketed four-year-old kindergarten, it was going to provide access for all families, a quality program and bring coherence to young, early childhood learning into the system. So as you listen to some of the slides, let that also kind of permeate your thoughts. Yes, look at how, how many people enroll, look at the quality of the program, look at how this brings coherence. So I believe that we delivered on these as it relates to student engagement and development. So we're going to talk about results tonight, enrollment, academic, and survey. So I'm going to first touch on enrollment and academic. Enrollment as of May, so 2016, 17, we had 122 students. Next year, we have at this point enrolled 126, so the number of students that have enrolled, roughly, I think it's close to 70%, have enrolled, their students are really excited about that. It does show you, the pink arrow to the 174 shows you that roughly 50 families did not enroll. So of the 174, five careers next year, 50 didn't enroll, they chose some other kind of 4K program or were their child's teacher at home, which is, we totally understand, but the bulk did enroll in our 4K program. So we're excited about that. So it provided access to lots of families. We are able to data mine our progress, so this is something that the 4K teachers and I will be coming around at the end of the year, just looking at our results overall. So we, we have report cards that have rubrics attached to them to ensure that teachers mark their report card all in a similar fashion. So 82% of our students met the reading benchmarks by semester, so already a high level of achievement in our 4K kids. 92% in math and that social, emotional health and wellness, 83%, which is following directions, being able to manage my emotions, working with other children. So we collapsed all those indicators into an overall percent and we're very pleased with the progress. Our 4K kids made by midway through the year, so that, so we're very, we believe that's just like a really strong trend of those students now moving into 5K.
So how do those numbers compare to 5K numbers? That was that.
I did not, I didn't do a day-to-day on 5K performance, but I will, we did have a collaborative meeting first around mathematics, just talking about our literacy, talking about how our students are going to transition into 5K, so we're starting those vertical conversations. I think what teachers are going to find in 5K are that our kids are very, you're going to see like handwriting without tears, for example, students forming letters in a very similar fashion. So there's been a systematic approach towards their instruction and our outcomes are all lined up to 5K and some are probably exceeding 5K in some spots. So 5K teachers, I think, are going to see that the kids are coming in very strong and well-prepared.
It's 120.
Yeah.
I have a question, I have a slide, the benchmark for reading, let's say, the 82%, is that for mid-year performance or is that for end-of-year?
What we did is I pulled, I looked at the indicators, so 82% of our students are secure with the reading benchmarks mid-year. Yeah, so it was a mid-year benchmark.
But that was our goal for mid-year, or is this for the end of the school year, they need to meet that?
We would want 100% to have reached the benchmark by the end of the year, yeah, yeah. Right, and so what, what's going to happen is over time, we're going to begin to understand the 4K culture in Cedarburg and look at our benchmarks and maybe they'll get adjusted. So we set the bar at a certain place based on our research and if we start seeing that students are exceeding the benchmarks a lot quicker, then we can nudge the bar even higher.
So then, what, how do these numbers translate to 5K in September? I'm saying, I mean, one of the reasons why everyone knows why we did this is so they can kind of hit the ground running more in 5K, right? And so is that something we won't know until next year in September, how this, how this happened, I mean, what happened together?
We can do, after we go through another cycle, we can do a compare and contrast on kindergarten performance, students in our 4K program as compared to those who were never in our 4K program, to see a compare and contrast there. We do know that our benchmarks are lined up. We do know that students, we instructed to reach our benchmarks, which led to the next level of benchmarks. We never had that kind of ability before. So we believe that, the theory is that we have, that coherence will greatly prepare students for the next grade level.
So you're going to track these students, 120 and 130.
For a couple cycles, yeah.
We also just to track kids that were in 4K program versus the kids that are 50 that went out.
Sure.
You get that data to, you know, whatever system they use, whether it was home or another program, see how that.
Yeah, we could do that easily.
Allen, I think you're going to, are you going to compare back those that never started with us in the 4K and the 5K level, 6K level, look at the differential that they started here before, and this is going to take, I think you said cycles?
We can do for a couple cycles, we'll pull specific indicators off the kindergarten report cards, see how students in this particular, this end of 1617 cohort did as compared to this new cohort coming through and we'll do a couple comparisons.
So it would be like, beginning year, mid-year, and then after that, they pretty much assimilate in that disadvantage might. in that disadvantage might wash out?
Uh, we would not want that to happen. So when you implement a program like this and provide this level of quality, we want to see the trajectory to go stronger and higher. So we?
I guess going back to what Jeff was saying, how, how long are you going to be down to track these one hundred and twenty students? In the first grade?
Primary years, I would advise, like your 5K, your first grade, second grade. So there is research out there that says that when you implement, like back in the day when all-day kindergarten was implemented, researchers would say that if you don't, if you implement all-day kindergarten, let's just say, and you don't do something different instructionally in the grades that follow, so like second, third grade, and you just teach the same way, that everything, all those students will plateau by the time they're in their upper elementary years, that it will look like there's no difference. So teachers actually have to adjust their instruction, hence the vertical meeting. So we talked about supertizing, which is a math behavior in young children, that they're able to see patterns quickly, combine numbers really quickly. So it's actually a standard that we teach and play games with and help equip our kids to do. So that's something we had no guarantee that was, and that's a really early new rece practice we want children to have. We had no guarantee that that was happening in any of the preschools before. So we, we believe that some of these instructional practices are going to make a difference on the overall performance of our students.
Would be, then, maybe a way to track it would be looking at what the math scores do, your clear years down the road? Is that, is there a, can you draw a correlation to that sort of, or?
We could follow, we could follow any cohort. Ted, Kirsten and I, we're in a data leadership academy this year and we tracked a cohort over six years. So we have, thanks to Kirsten's work, have the ability to, to identify the cohort and follow them. So just pick the indicators and follow them for a few years. Math would be another good, good norm mark for this piece of data that we could incorporate in there.
Oh, it's very encouraging.
Uh huh, yeah, we're excited.
Is this your second slide or?
Careful. All right, here we go. So now I'm going to pass the torch off to Amy, Supreme Guide, she's our 4K teacher at Heartview.
All right, so save your questions, please. No, I'm very blessed to have an opportunity to teach 4K at Heartview. It was a very exciting opportunity and I was ready to jump for it and attend all those meetings and kind of be a part of the implementation process. So it was a really exciting career. I was a little nervous, thinking about having forty-six families to communicate with and forty-six children to make a difference in. So I did have a little nerves in me to start the year, but I'm very grateful. I've had great family supports, great support from my principal Jane and other staff members as well as my 4K team. So I was not as nervous as the year went on. Another plus for me is I have a four-year-old daughter in a 4K program, so I thought this was a perfect fit for me, because I kind of know what's going on in a four-year-old mind anyway. So the 4K advisory that Alan was talking about was put together so that we could really gauge what was going on throughout the year and get input from other people, not just the 4K team. So this is a picture that was taken at our first 4K advisory meeting at West Lawn. Each advisory meeting was held at a different school, so you could kind of showcase that school. So in this picture, you see lots of different representations. There are the teachers, we have parents from all three of the elementary schools on there as well, other school staff, speech and language, principals, special ed staff, psychologists. So it's a well-rounded team to really dive into and take a look at our first year of 4K. So again, the team is combined of all different people. We met three times throughout the year at each one of our schools. And it was really nice to kind of get the feedback from all different angles. We see a kind of, in the teacher times, so it was nice to hear the feedback from parents as well as other school staff to get a general sense of where we are going and how we're doing. And then we also facilitated a satisfaction, satisfaction survey that we put together at those meetings and then sent out to families to give us data. So these are the three meetings that we had, and we had an agenda at each meeting. So it always started off, as you can see, with a class highlight. So each school, the teacher was able to highlight something that they thought was going well in their classroom and in their school. And then in fall, we started developing the survey. We started with just creating lists and questions and then kind of toned it down and kind of looked at the wording and made sure that it made sense what we were asking parents. In winter, again, we did the class highlight and then the curriculum review. We wanted parents really to get a dive into what curriculum we were using. So we had three different stations. We had one station where they learned about C4L, our Connect for Learning Curriculum. They had one where they went to handwriting without tears, and then another one was a social, emotional curriculum. So parents and the other advisory members got a chance to kind of go round robin and get a chance to kind of touch some of the initiatives and use them like we teach in 4K. And we do have a table up here as well, some of the initiatives that we use and some of our curriculum, if you'd like to take a look, that's there too as well. And then in spring, we just had this yesterday at Heartview, and so we went over the survey results. The results were sent, or the surveys were sent to parents kind of right around spring break, and then we got a chance to last night as our advisory split up into little teams and really take a closer look at certain questions and the percentages and the outcomes that we got for that. And then to finish up our advisory, we kind of came up with a list of things that we can change and improve on for the upcoming school year. So like I said, it was sent out in spring, satisfaction survey. We had a great turnout, we had sixty-six percent of families responded. So there you can see the numbers, eighty-one out of one hundred and twenty-two. And there was four categories that were on the survey. So we wanted feedback on parent communication, how the teachers and the school was doing, presenting all the information, making sure you knew what your child was doing in the classroom, and any concerns that parents had that we were handling the correct way. Another category was assessment and curriculum. We wanted to know if families felt that we had a strong curriculum and what we could improve on. Social motor and health and wellness was a category, and then other was like a summary, your overall opinion of our 4K program. So results of the survey, and they're really encouraging and really positive. We keep thinking this is a first-year program and we were very pleased with the comments and the outcomes. So parents had a scale of one to four. Three and four were telling us that they were satisfied with it. Four was completely satisfied. So in the area of communication, ninety-five percent of our families were satisfied with how we handled it. We all kind of have different means of doing it, but they were very happy with the frequency and the methods that we used. So we are excited to see that number there. Assessment and curriculum, eighty-eight percent of families were satisfied. Socially, emotional, ninety-three percent. And we keep thinking 4K developmentally, socially, emotional is what we really want to target. We want to make sure that when they get to kindergarten in first grade, that they can control their emotions, they know how to problem solve. So that as a team for 4K teachers, we were pleased to see that we spent a lot of time with that. And then socially, emotional, physical development, ninety-three percent satisfied. And then this is where we want to say yay 4K. Overall satisfaction, ninety-five percent. So you think of a first-year program, we are still working on the teams and we want to kind of change things. We have ideas already on how to change things, but to have ninety-five percent of our families support us and be happy with the program is really exciting for us to see.
I think if we surveyed the public on the board, we would gain.
Well, come on and join us in 4K. Yes.
Do you have a question?
Absolutely.
Excellent results, sixty-six percent, and it's out of one hundred and twenty that came in. Did your group discuss how we could, you know, and Chris was probably, we could never get anywhere near that amount. Did you guys discuss how maybe get a higher?
At the advisory?
Percentage from parents or?
Right. At the advisory meeting last night, we kind of discussed on how we can get more families to participate in that. We thought one of our calls maybe was sending out right by spring break. Families are kind of busy with going application and that kind of thing, so maybe the timing of it. Also kind of just as teachers, just getting out there more, sending an extra email reminder of, oh, the deadlines today. Even like in weekly notes, our secretaries could include that in our.
Format?
It was through Google. They were sent through email, like they got an email link, so it was all Google format there. So yeah, I think just us doing a better job communicating to, I don't know, I mean, we all do lots of surveys, so surveys can sometimes be like, oh, here's another survey. The survey was very short, it had twenty-three questions, so it wasn't very, I mean, long. But just, I think, our vertebrae and our school support saying, this is important for us, especially because we want to make this program successful.
With the Google, was it a monkey survey? Is that how it came along?
No, it's a Google, it's an actual Google, it's a part of Google, it's a survey maker, it's quite a Google. It's pretty straightforward.
My, my thing from my head there would be where Rick and Dave have come from is, is not the whole community uses Google? And so I would suggest looking maybe somewhere else for an alternative Google with it, if you want to boost it. And I, I know where you're coming from on it, I get it, but there are people that in my world, where they see it and they just brush it off. And I guess if we're looking for a higher percentage, and there's no argument with what you have for numbers, but more participation, maybe stop, I mean, it brings up more of the numbers, I don't know. Just, just a thought for that time.
Yeah, I appreciate that.
Hi, Professor Cass, Michael over tonight. Lovely team of Bert and Lisa.
Thank you, everyone. We're in the symposium, and I am the 4K teacher over at West Lawn, working under the terminals. And I will echo Alan in my gratitude and the opportunity to be the teacher for 4K at that school, and also echo Amy in our, our privilege to be part of a successful implementation year. I think the thing that strikes me the most is the opportunity I had this year to now be teaching my fourth grade level in the Cedarburg School District. And anytime I'm able to run my visors like that as a professional is a win-win for me. It gives me the perspective I need to know where these children are going at the upper grades, knowing where they have been, and it makes my teaching work more insightful to knowing that child and their path here at Cedarburg. As Amy explained in the survey, there are things that we know that we can do better at. Our implementation year is an opportunity to really examine where we can do better as year two begins next year. One of the things that we heard from parents, as well as our own concerns as teachers, was to include some elements outside social developmental time, which we would think of as a typical traditional recess time. Because of our half-day program, we were concerned about the curriculum demands that we were placing on ourselves and our students. And we, we were playing with the idea of how to provide outside time. We thought that maybe a place where teachers would address that individually and set up as a united set plan in the schedule of the day. I think we all approached it a little differently. However, parents seem to feel that they need some sort of determined recess time if they can count their child on hand. So while they are very committed to providing growth motor, it's development for the children and a variety of inside activities, we are encouraged to providing more of an outside recess time next year, that would look like a minimum number of times per week during acceptable weather, and then also deciding what equipment that would be, whether they have a play structure that is developmentally appropriate for the children, or outdoor recreational centers, things like that. Another area that parents gave us, we have about, was the event at the very beginning of the school year, where children traditionally come in with their families, and we call that our sneak peek evening, where they are able to bring school supplies, meet their teacher, tour the school that they're going at. Many families, especially our families with 4Kers that were their oldest and only child, felt that was extremely intimidating for a new little one that may have only turned four a month or so prior, to be in that school environment where their children came through by many families, all the siblings. It's a quite hectic time, and to help maneuver their child through that, they thought was overwhelming. So what we have decided to do to improve on that is to add an additional forty-five-minute special sneak peek time prior to the school by to help, help relieve some of those uncomfortable feelings that they might have. Looking ahead, we're also looking to satisfy families who felt we did not offer enough of our specials time, which we now refer to as the, so art, music, and physical education. At this point, this implementation year, each 4K class has one of those classes per month, and we are looking to increase that young time to two per month. So every 4K child would have two art classes per month, two music, and two violin per month. And Amy and Bailey and I always have a variety of lessons available in the classroom for those areas of development. However, we understand the expertise that our special teachers bring to that line, so we're, we're trying to look at a way to provide that for our 4K students. Another concern we heard from families, and something that is an ongoing conversation with us as a staff, is the optimal teacher-to-student ratio. So class size is always a conversation we're having as we learn to our youngest learners, and I know Alan has had some conversations about that that will be ongoing.
What was the average class size?
They varied. Both of my classes at West Lawn have sixteen. The other classes?
Twenty-four.
Yeah, perfect, twenty-four, twenty-two.
Yeah.
And the recommendation, I know Ted spoke to this last night in our advisory, there's not, yeah, was that in here, but a recommendation of eighteen to twenty-four.
Class size, that one, just.
Any other questions? And then we wanted to just provide you with a little bit of a feeling for what it's like to be in a 4K classroom and to be with these little ones all day long, so we were able to collect some of the many photos that we've taken and put them into a presentation for you to enjoy. and put them into a presentation for you to enjoy.
That's great. Can we put that on the website? Do we have permission from the parents to post that?
We'll confirm that, you're hoping that, and then you can enroll today. We're going to do our little signers on the bottom of that. Enroll today and put the school contact information on there as well.
And maybe posters for that, the QR.
Yes.
And there, we'll wait for that.
Yeah, that'd be awesome. So I'd like to close with this quote from a parent. Thank you for allowing us to be a part of this 4K program. It has truly changed our daughter's life. So thank you, everyone. It's been a great year, and we're just thrilled in all, all respects. So thank you for enjoying it and just sitting back and soaking that all in this evening. So thank you to our 4K teachers and for the collective efforts of our district to make this happen, so.
Thanks.
Thank you.
What about 3K?
Quick shout out, we want Alan to acknowledge a lot of individuals, but I have to acknowledge Alan. Alan came in two years ago, we were just in initial stages of building some understanding of what this program could look like, and now the question just accelerated. And it's his leadership, when you look at the slides, you see those contagious smiles, you see those teachers energized, the parents that he had brought together, the unit shares he brought together, that's very deliberate. He's got a vision, he's got a focus, and what we see here, the program that's going to impact our school district for years. This is the class of 2030 that we enrolled this year in our system. And what Alan was talking about and what the board was asking about is this ripple that it's going to create in the system. So we're bringing in kids who are now exposed to vocabulary, our practices, and as they move through kindergarten, elementary, middle, and high school, we should see an elevation in the performance because of the ripple that we're creating through the system. And this is transformational work, and it happens because of great leadership behind the scenes. So thank you, Alan, for all the work you've done in the last few years.
My pleasure. It takes a lot of work, and secondly, in those major project teams. To start, congrats, you can say, hey, we want to do, I can do it, I really applaud you. You made, you never know when they come to listen, how you're making progress, and I truly appreciate it. To see that you're the one who really hit you was your focus on not, not just saying, okay, we have a 4K program, we'll take it to the next 4K. Now, how we have a big kindergarten program, first grade program, and secondary, because we have this platform now, we have a platform, we're going to have that room along with the district. So keep up, great work.
Thank you.
Well done.
The other two people, by the way, stepped up, and kids are singing in the choir. So that's how they, after, they really get a tax, so they can be about to say, so they know during the presentation.
You brought them to tears, actually.
All right, well, thank you, guys. It's really nice to see that, awesome. All right, moving on to recommendations.
Recommendations, so we're going to take a clock, so we might want to order pizza. And in fact, as we, um, donations. This evening, we're going to do a consensus vote on our donations. Instead of taking action on each item, I'll, I think, have a consensus vote on all the donations and the various objections to one of the donations.
Separate it up.
We can separate it out, but this way we can explain the donation process. We're still acknowledging a low student donation, but then we'll just have a consensus vote that they have in the form of this, which I can legally make sense of.
Yeah.
A bit more efficient for us. So this evening, I ask the board to approve the following donations. The donation of $2,020 from Cedarburg Lions, 200 will be used for the CHS AFS program, 500 will be used for the CHS National History Day, and $1,500 will be used by the CHS Alliance Program for the 1617 school year. And also ask for the approval of 2,000 donation from Wells Fireball Community Support Campaign. This donation will be used for breakout spaces at Webster Transitional School for the 2017-18 school year. Webster Transitional School soon will be Webster Little School as we transition into the 1718 school year. And ask the board to approve a donation of $2,018 from the Weston PTO. This donation will be used to support instructional and programmatic needs at Weston Elementary School for the 1617 school year. Another donation, ask for approval of $6,598.57 from the Public PTO. This donation will be used to support the instructional programmatic needs and flexible seating furnishings at Parkview Elementary School for the 1617 school year. And I'd ask the board to approve a grant for $4,000 from the Coles Cares Field Trip Grant Program. This donation will be used for various field trips for Parkview Elementary students during the 2017-18 school year. And I'd ask the board to approve donations from the Cedarburg Education Foundation. First one in the amount of $2,500 to Webster Transitional School to support certain resources and equipment related to the CSD River Edge Partnership Service. Another grant from the foundation in the amount of $2,500 to Parkview Forest and Weston Elementary Schools to support certain resources and equipment related to plateworks experience. Another grant from the foundation in the amount of $3,000 to Weston Elementary School to support certain resources and equipment related to Weston fifth-grade flexible learning experience. And the last grant from the foundation in the amount of $3,000 to Weston Elementary School to support certain resources and equipment related to Weston Baker Space IMC experience. These are the grants from the foundation, so I ask the board to have a consensus vote on accepting all these donations.
So move to the second. Motion to the second, all those in favor? Aye. Against? Motion carries to unanimous.
Excellent, thank you very much. The total donation is $2,027,116.57 this evening. Brings the total this year of $81,397.14. Quick, go over there. The next item that we ask the board to take action on is the contract renewal for teachers. A lot of us kind of dispute that.
Every year at this time, we present contracts for the 2017-18 school year, so you have a list before you of all the full-time contracts that we're extending to our current Cedarburg educators, as well as part-time contracts to those educators that were confident will have positions next year for those non-annual contracts. We ask for approval of all of those.
I'll move approval.
Second?
Motion to the second, all those in favor? Aye. Against? Motion carries to unanimous.
Thank you, working with us. Last year, this approval was part of the person on report. This year, we just separated, so that's why we submitted it. But we thought it's important for the board to actually take action on approval of these contracts based on the FTE this evening. The next item is an action item, approve short-term disability coverage. You don't care about the main?
Uh, this year currently offers long-term disability coverage and pays for long-term facility coverage for any eligible employees. Long-term disability coverage covers any accident or illness or sickness that is long-term, sixty days or longer. So obviously, there's a gap there from the initial date of sickness or accident to the, to the sixty days. So this proposal is basically bringing forward a short-term disability insurance plan. The, the plan would be at the employee's expense, so there'd be no cost to the district. This administrative work to maintain the plan for the employees who sign up, and basically would add a little bit extra coverage for anyone who had unexpected illness or accident. There is a cap of how much coverage they can get, and it's basically based on a preview of their salary that they made a contract for you, so.
Is this something that other districts in our conference offer?
Uh, districts in our conference, I'm not sure. It's very popular, very common, or, um, Madison, a lot of districts around there have something similar. It's very popular just because it's set up as employee expense, so you have a cost to it. And I guess that it doesn't cover the full optimal wage, so it leaves you using tampering with it. And it's a very beneficial for employees who are new, who haven't saved up a lot of sick time from here to here. They have an extra, uh, that, that, that.
We looked at this three, four years ago, but we had walked away from it due to the expense. So, and it brought it up and PNF for, in a discussion. I, I think it's something that we need to offer, because we do have what you said, is a gap, especially for the newer employees, and it's for the short term. If you do it for the long term, already in place.
Great, yeah, that's great, and hopefully it'll help us recruit and retain. Motion.
I'll move to approve, as presented by Ben, the short-term disability insurance. Second, that's coverage.
Motion to the second, all those in favor? Aye. Against? Motion carries to unanimous.
For the record, I am a C, and I've got a relationship with National Insurance Services that appears to be involved in this program.
We're going to have to table this one, then? I, I don't know if it would pass if the board was here and only three of us voting on it.
Who and the other?
Yeah, yeah.
Are you going to retire them? To put this in place?
No, our plan was implemented starting last year.
Okay.
In return, we can retire them.
We can absolutely count.
Good job on that.
Great, moving on. Yep, moving on to another gain, action to approve entry in performance contract. We have John Custer and some guests here this evening, and that's going to lead us through this, this action item. This is a discussion we've been having with the board, D and G, PNF, and the board, and now we are there at the point where we need action to continue through this process.
We're finally here.
Yep.
Through, through a long process of evaluating the HVAC and the equipment, we've come to this, this day of reckoning, if you will, where we are now at the point where we're looking for the board to, to move forward with the, the approval of the exemption, any energy exemption. We have with us tonight, President McKinstry, who is the, the selected ESCO. We have Dan Choi, the senior representative, Brent Schmidt, the professional engineer, and then Nick LaBush. They're here to answer any questions that you may have with regards to some of the documentation that was included in your board docs. The board doc information, we basically went through a, basically a highlight of the, the project's full HVAC upgrade at Parkview Forest, and we don't need to keep going over this because we've, we've talked about it. All new boilers, upgrading on the HVAC equipment, which was, was in dire need. So we're elevating that. They're going to give us a guaranteed maximum price tonight. It's included in your flyer, in your handouts, in your board docs. And they're also going to give us an energy savings that's going to be guaranteed. In addition to that, on the facility improvement measures, the handout that you have, there's potential incentives also in there. Those potential incentives are, are merely, will be like focus and energy incentives. Those are prescriptive incentives that would be guaranteed to us. That doesn't mean that's the only one that are out there, and we'll fish for more if they're available. But these are the, are the numbers that are guaranteed. So if we have questions tonight with regards to them, we're prepared to move forward with the, our request that we go ahead with McKinstry as the energy exemption ESCO company. They were one of five that we submitted. Of the five, three returned to us, Train, Johns Controls, McKinstry. And as we discussed at the Building and Grounds Committee, our favor was with them because they're not committed to any type of equipment. Train, obviously, has a legion of equipment. Johns Controls, the controls and the equipment. McKinstry is neutral with that regard, and we're very comfortable with the team as well. So they're here tonight. If we have any questions, move forward, otherwise we look for approval.
Um, what is the guarantee? What is the, simply a financial stating that we don't realize those, those savings? That McKinstry would pony up the money, is that?
That's correct. Uh, Nick, you want to address that?
Yeah, so the energy savings, as, as outlined in the exhibit, you there highlight what those savings are. And we write a shortfall check, we write inside of that annually, so you can see that return to the district and a guarantee, all of the guarantee probably prices kind of.
Have you ever had to pay out on another one of those?
We have, yeah, actually, we had one where there was a little bit of the way that the system was operated. It was a shortfall, we did have to pony up on it. So we pride ourselves, the reason the contract's as long as it is, because there's a lot of detail there that highlights how we keep score. So our net out is if we can't count it, you can't count it, you're going to do a shortfall, so.
So can you go into a little more depth as to why that, why they didn't pick their number? Was it the way they were operating it, or the?
Yeah.
Or anything that they said, or?
Yeah, so obviously, when we implement energy-saving systems, there's, there's parameters around assumption of occupancy and that type of thing. And the systems weren't controlled, you know, per the pre-agreed timeline. So we either to, to pony up, it wasn't an error calculation, it was essentially just a shortfall based on how the system was being operated, so.
And Chris, we have, we have an energy policy which, which sets those numbers. So we want to obtain those numbers, seventy-six for air, sixty-eight for heating. We kind of keep those at those set points to guarantee those numbers. That's the numbers that they're basing these savings off of, so. And then it's trackable.
So, yeah, that's my next question. How do we track that? How do we know it's becoming a problem before it's a problem?
Yeah, one of, one of the exhibits, and there's a measurement verification program which delays by a measure, so mechanical systems have a different measurement verification than some, like electrical piece. So some of it's gearing, some of it is through the building automation, keeping track of that. So we get an annual measurement verification report. We'll be in contact with John and team. We were with John long enough, we know he's going to be calling us if we're not hitting the numbers. So it'll be a, a check and balance there to make sure that you're, you're on track for that financial.
We get a vision that we have performance assurance specialists within our organization that monitor, like we mentioned, whether it's a evaluation system or different trends that we monitor continuously throughout the years, to pick on that, pick up on that Pick on that, pick up on that, like very quickly, you know, like there can be a whole lot of savings.
And that service is available throughout the length of the contract?
It is correct.
They're, they're basically another assistance to our energy watchdog, if you will. So they assist us in achieving those goals.
Okay.
I don't have any questions. We've gone through this in committees level and I, I think this is a group to go with, a company to walk through the. I, I kind of, I kind of pride ourselves on taking repairs proactively and this is the way to do it. You know, when you're at your home, you're first family, water, you're fed, you know, maybe you don't wait till it's. We have that, we got lucky last year with the break that we were, that happened over.
Correct.
Over.
Over.
Right, right. We would have been on the service of our schools. So, you know, we pushed over this, I think, we've done a nice job to be able to run it, but instead of saying we would proactively upgrade our schools, not only energy efficient wise, but also comfort, controllability, digital controls are, you know, been around for decades. Our dramatic stuff is so outdated and so inefficient, it's just the second update at schools. So I, I think it's a good way to do it. This is a good system to use to do that. And it's not, it's not just saying we have to, you know, like that. Everybody fellow party members to do this major, we have to do that.
And if these last lines, the last ones, you're going to be a lot of money.
They'll be toasting me at my graveside. One thing that's, the one thing that's moderately neglected here is that the indoor air quality that we're going to achieve for our facilities, which is very good right now, it's just going to get elevated now to know that those, those standards are all met. The carbon dioxide levels, the purging of the, we're going to have detectors in there. We're going to know where we're at and where we're supposed to be. And we're going to operate these systems to the, to the greatest ability. We're going to have, we're going to have lighting systems inside the HVAC system that helps kill bacteria, which we currently have. But we know that these are going to be designed in the system as designed instead of added on. So we put the UV light banks in there. Some of the things that we, we had for air transfer was remarkable with that process. These are going to be built into the system. So I, IQ is going to be phenomenal in those buildings.
What about removing the humidity? Or maybe shampoo the carpet or when it can bring in salt and rain and snow?
Yeah, dehumidification is part of the system. I mean, that's all, I mean, obviously dehumidification's moisture extraction, which is air conditioning. That process will all go on. Obviously, in the summer, in the winter time, your dew points are, are at a completely different level.
Right.
So, but that'll all be monitored.
So we can ramp it up at the beginning too. We shampoo all the carpets.
We shampoo all the carpets. We do ramp that up, yeah.
I know we do now, but does this give us?
Yeah, the efficiency levels can be greater. I agree with Kevin. I think this is, A, the right time with everything you've put into it, the systems and your team and the creative. I mean, we're following the state law with using a, a tool from a financial standpoint that helps us get to the right way of doing this. And, and we're using that tool for the purpose it was designed. Exactly.
Yeah, this is exactly what Act 32 is intended for.
We are not extended beyond. We are consistent with what the, what the act was designed for, so.
Would you guys agree with that?
In the next month, we're in the middle of all 15 approvals, so you guys are right on track for getting that note on. And in addition, Chris, to your question, the EPI reporting that Ben's, I think Ben trans EPI and all this stuff. But all of that gets uploaded through the portal as well. So just part of the resolutions that you have of those, measurement verification targets are set and they get verified to John's team and then a pull-up result.
Excellent.
Yeah.
All right. So should be two separate motions.
Correct. We're asking the board to take, to take action to include the change in the contract of McKinstry.
I'll move approval. Second.
Motion to second, any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Against. Motion carries in.
Thank you.
Thanks, Sean. Yep, so now on to letter E. I think we're going to ask the board to take action to approve the resolution on energy efficiency exemption. And I'll turn this over to Ben.
Yep, so this is the second part of the project, so it's the financing. This resolution gives the authority to exceed the revenue limit to finance and fund this, this project over 10 years. The resolution has details on the debt payments over the next 10 years, the total cost of the project and guaranteed savings for it. The debt payments ran out, our stock costs, the sale of debt hasn't occurred yet. That'll occur next month at the June board meeting. And so we'll bring back our revised resolutions that the board may want to be on the final interest rates set from Eric's own.
So what will this do to taxpayers? Is that you front, you, the big payments are backloaded, right? Can you talk to that a little bit?
Uh, there should be very minimal tax impact from year to year. Obviously, the payments go on the tax levy, so it's being assessed, but we had planned it out so there would be little impact from year to year. And in fact, the first few years are very low payments to counteract our current debt payments. And then they increase over the next couple of years to kind of balance out. So there's no huge fluctuation in the tax levy. In fact, the utility savings should bring it down even a little bit lower than what we're expecting. Because anytime they have utility savings, operational savings from the project, they go back and so the debt payments are bringing it back down, so.
So right now, within the budget, we will be able to pay the payments in 17, 18, 18, 19, and so forth without any real impact to what I would pay in property taxes.
Right.
And then as debt rolls off from things that we funded years ago, then we up our payments, right? And so myself as taxpayer, I won't see any increase from that either because the debt is rolling out, right?
Right, yeah, your tax bill from year to year should be pretty flat because you go from year to year, even though tax, the debt payments.
But you can't, you can't speak for the city or anything. All right.
Yeah, this was a very good, Brian Brewer was at one of the meetings who watched this and prepared. He said also, Mr. President, this was for those three years, the approach is a very good way to do it. So the taxpayers really see a flat payment assessing and they hit the tax base, so it's a good way to set it up.
And you have, they'll be here next, next month for the sale of debt. Actually, they'll be a little bit more so payments they had exactly interest rate and whatnot. So we're budgeting conservatively on the interest rate at 3%. They're projecting to be lower than that, so.
That's great.
Well done.
And this went through the PNF committee?
Yes.
Again and again, so nice work, everyone. So at this time, unless there's any discussion or questions, I'll take a motion.
I'll move approval. I'll second it.
Motion to second, any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye. Aye.
Against? Motion carries in. Nice work, everyone.
Actually, that's a great move for this. Well done.
And finally.
Thank you, everyone. Gentlemen. I just sort of.
Yeah, you got your individual thoughts, so you're everybody. Got a few more listening.
We'll see where the schools.
This was free up until this moment. Let's just be clear.
Thank you.
Is there anyone from the public who wishes to speak on any topic? Anyone at all on anything? All right. Moving on, PNF committee report. I guess we kind of want, oh, we just, we just started it now. We really spanned it. And then Buildings and Grounds, I, I would think that that is also covered.
Pretty much covered. We also did have one other topic that we talked about, long-term facilities. I mean, we just kind of keep, you know, plugging away advantage. Trying to take an overarching, long, very long-term perspective for the district. We've talked about trying to engage an architectural firm to help guide us that kind of a program that we would make use of districts need educationally. We can start that process to do that. So we're still making progress to do that. So we'll get our current facilities, what we, what last year, we probably walked through the tech end area. We talked about that high school, different schools, who what their needs are, and sorry, and just do some more in terms of that. We want to keep that process.
That's in the budget. We have a budget for this next year.
Right, yes, the money's in the budget for that.
All right. Well, at this time, I'll take a motion to adjourn to the committee of the whole. We are all invited. Right down the hallway in the boardroom. There's a motion. So move.
Second.
Motion to second, all those in favor?
Aye.
Against? Motion carries in. And that is where we will also, if we do have the, we're going to come back to fire. We'll take action to adjourn.